Making approval, uh, a motion to approve minutes from last month or the last session.
Uh, can I second it? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, so you shall, we're ready for your report.
So we have a couple meetings to catch you up on. Um, in our May meeting, we awarded a new audit contract. Our previous auditors, Murray and Long, we had done our audit for about twenty years, and they are no longer going to be doing government audits. Um, so we did a very extensive bid process and awarded it to BBD LLP. And we'll have new auditors this year. We also had a public hearing on our ordinance for development impact fees to raise the water portion of the impact fee for new development uh, from eighteen hundred dollars, which has been in effect since two thousand and four, to three thousand dollars. And that ordinance did go into effect. We also had a presentation from CSM. Um, they were requesting a partnership um, to apply for a community parks and playground grant for some outdoor exercise equipment on their campus, which will be a pass-through grant. And the council did support that, so we um, are working on submitting that grant. We also awarded the um, contract for the floating docks at the, at Leonardtown Wharf. S.E. Davis was the um, the contractor for three hundred forty-nine thousand six sixty-seven. And that will be phase one. There'll be a small portion that we aren't able to do at this time, but it'll get us a pretty large chunk of the project done. Uh, we'll be applying for an additional waterway improvement grant. We have orders forwarded to notice to proceed, so um, that should see some activity shortly. Then in our June meeting, we adopted the ordinance um, for the, adopting the budget and setting the tax rate um, for FY twenty. We kept the tax rate at the current point one-two-six-six per hundred of assessed value, uh, which has been stable for many years. Also, the council had tabled the final site plan approval for Clark's Rest at the May meeting. They had held a public hearing, uh, and they did go ahead and approve that with some revisions. Some of the suggestions that you all had passed on, um, they had the same feelings and um, the kind, the owner had made some revisions. We also introduced an ordinance for number, ordinance number one ninety-two, sale of surplus property, which would be uh, to sa- sell our second condo. We've already gone to closing on the first one where we used to have our offices, so hopefully we'll be going to closing soon on the second one. And then just a couple of updates, uh, we did just get notice that we received our third public art grant, so we're gonna be starting on that. Um, it's that's gonna be at the winery. It's a ten-foot sculpture that has um, uh, six-foot metal wine glasses that rotate or um, you know, it's called wind cheers. And they're clinking and they're on top of, of wine barrels. It's gonna be really stunning. And then uh, we received all of our applications for our beside grant. The deadline was May thirtieth. We had fifteen applications and sixty-five thousand dollars in requests. So Heather's on that committee and we're gonna be meeting on Friday to go through this application. And the council did approve to also go ahead and apply for the next uh, year as well for another fifty thousand dollars. So hopefully we'll continue that program.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're gonna change our order of business. So under new business, our first case will be number one dash fifteen Seymour Building Commercial Floor uh, at two-two-six-eight-zero Washington Street. And this is a request for architectural plan review and approval.
Okay, this is the Seymour Town Building, which received planning and zoning approval back in January of two thousand and fifteen to add a third story to the building and then combine and refurbish the apartments on the second and third floor. Um, and also in order to prepare for a commercial business on the first floor. At this time, um, Mike Lumal was able to secure a commercial business for the first floor. Um, so a few minimal renovations need to be made to the exterior of the building, which is why we're here before you. So a portion of the rear wall will be removed to allow for a new hood exhaust duct. Um, a window on the front of the building will be changed to a folding door. The side of the building, uh, which faces ours, um, or Park Avenue, will have uh, one of the doors removed and replaced with a window, and two new storefront windows will be added. Um, other than your review, the only review that's pending is the Fire Marshall. And Mike Lumal is here to answer any other questions that you might have.
I'll put real quick for you. So, we're gonna add two new storefronts on the side from Park Avenue to get some more light into the restaurant. And we're gonna close in this door and put a window. And the main thing, we have a, just a storefront which is facing uh, Washington Street. Uh, the plan is to get a, a folding door similar to the wrecks with some outside seating to make it easier to access um, the street. That's the plan. So it's a corner plan. And we'll be able to go out to the street with folding doors. And as you can see, we have a lot of seating in the back and we just added two new windows. You good? Any questions?
It's very nice.
It looks really nice.
They work their product, the partners, see the revenue of Washington?
The building has been a tremendous like, it's so much better.
The restaurant took a long time.
I'm really excited about the restaurant.
Yes, we are. Looking forward to that. I don't have any questions or comments, do you?
Yeah, let's not hold up the restaurant.
Right. Okay, give me a motion.
I'll make a motion. Um, if our case number one dash fifteen, the Seymour Building Commercial Floor, two-two-six-eight-zero Washington Street, um, we send a, I guess favorable.
Yeah.
Approved.
Approved.
Yeah, go ahead and approve their architectural plan.
Right.
Renovation.
Yep.
Is that clear enough? Do you want me to redo it?
I have listed in the staff report, it's okay.
She'll write it right.
I know what you meant, Heather, you're good.
No second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Looking forward to dinner.
Yes.
Uh, the second uh, case on the agenda then is uh, number three dash sixteen, which is Smecko Expansion at two-three-three-six-five Hollywood Road. And this is a request for their final site plan. Oh, cool.
Okay, um, Smecko came back in, um, oh goodness, in March. And they consolidated a couple parcels and then they came back to planning and zoning with their concept approval in May of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, that site plan included a seventy-two thousand nine hundred and eighty square foot building. Since then, they have reduced the size of the building by one thousand eighteen square feet. Um, the pro- the project is currently proposed to be completed in a series of three phases. Phase one will be the construction of the new building. Phase two will be the demolition of the existing building. And phase three will be the construction or repair of the outbuildings. Um, uh, the plan establishes a seventy-foot setback from Hollywood Road as well as fifty-foot setbacks where the property abuts residential properties. Um, it still provides for fourteen acres of the green landscape area. Includes a total of a hundred and eighty-eight parking spaces. The employees are not going to incre- increase, they're gonna remain at around seventy-six. And the purpose of the facility is so that it could serve as a backup uh, for data and operations if there was a failure at their Hughesville Center. Um, they have the, received their approvals from the Department of Public Works, Soil Conservation District. Fire Marshall is still pending, um, and the traffic study was already completed by Lenhart. Um, and it maintains a level of service A, so that's all in good standing. You have a plethora of, of presenters today. I can't list all their names, but I'll answer any questions that you have. There's too many of you to list, sorry.
Good afternoon, and uh, thanks to the commission for hearing about our Southern Region Facility Project. Uh, as Jada mentioned, we have a large uh, cohort of Smecko folks here with us. Uh, I'll go through them real quickly. We've got uh, our president and CEO, Joe Slater. Got our senior vice president and chief information officer, Joe Trenacosta. We've got uh, our managing director of reliability, security, and compliance, Dave Byer. And our facilities director, George Allen Hayden. And then we've got uh, two members from our design team, two key players, uh, Steve Abel with Lawrence Abel and Associates. Steve is the project manager and also lead architect. And then we had Stacy Legana with Lorenzi Guys and Gannell, who is also the lead uh, project manager and civil engineer for the project. So, real quick, I'll give a brief introduction on uh, why this project is important for us, uh, what the project is. And we'll turn it over to Stacy to cover the site plan, um, existing conditions, proposed conditions. And we'll turn it over to Lawrence Abel and Associates to cover the floor plan, the renderings you see throughout the room, our sustainable design and, and lead approach for the building. And then I'll close with some remarks on the phasing and construction schedule. So getting started, as you guys know, we are Southern Maryland Electric Cooperative. We are the electric utility provider here in Southern Maryland. Uh, we serve southern Prince George's County, all of Charles County, all of Saint Mary's County, and the majority of Cowherd County. We operate from two major regions, the central region, which is located in Hughesville, and our southern region. In total, we service about a hundred and sixty-five thousand customers total. And um, we're excited to, to remain here in the town, so. Uh, when we started on this project, it was important for us to develop an overall project goal. And with that goal, we wanted to not only carry it through to our, to our design team, but to the community, uh, to our customers, and ultimately uh, to our contractor through the, the life of the uh, construction of the project. So, real quick, that, that goal is to construct a sustainable facility that will support the continued modernization of Smecko's business operations while improving customer service, reliability, the employee workplace environment, and our presence in the community. And we hope that you see throughout our presentation today that, that our design has achieved those goals. In addition to being the electric service provider uh, for Southern Maryland, we also pride ourselves in our community relationships. Uh, we do a lot of community work, uh, whether it be with United Way or our Smecko Bike Ride that supports uh, various charities, the local hospitals, fire and rescue squads, and all the, the charities that we continue to, to support. Uh, we look forward to continuing to support that and being a very active member in the community with this new uh, facility. So, some quick history about Smecko and our presence in Leonardtown. Uh, we moved to Leonardtown in nineteen seventy-nine. Uh, so our building that's there, two-three-three-six-five, uh, is coming up on forty years of age, or is right at forty years of age and is, is really reaching uh, the end of its youthful life. So we're uh, looking to, to modernize and um, bring something that can continue to allow our business to evolve and adapt to the changing technologies. Overall, we think it'll improve our ability to serve both as a partner in the community and uh, to improve our service as an electric utility. So as I mentioned, uh, Steve and, and Stacy are here, we'll be talking about some of the details of the design, but I wanted to give a brief overview of the, of the, uh, support team that we've had over the last two years as we've, as we've developed this design, so. We had a ECS Mid-Atlantic was our geotechnical engineer. The Potomac Energy Group, Peg, was our mechanical electrical plumbing engineer. We have a BEI, has been the structural engineer. We had a building envelope consultant come in and help us uh, develop our, our wall sections and our, ultimately our building envelope. That's uh, Simpson, Gumpert, and Hager. We've had a code consultant involved with the project to help us through the co- code review, uh, Pancy Aaron Associates. And then, as Jada mentioned, we had Lenhart Traffic Control do our traffic study. Finally, we had PoliSonics who did our low voltage design, including our networking, security, and audiovisual components for the building. In conjunction with the design team, we've engaged Shible Construction to provide pre-construction services throughout the, um, throughout the design cycle. As Jada mentioned, there were some changes that were made um, between the concept and what we're gonna show today. That was really a, a reflection of some of the real-time pricing we had see, received and some of the constructability feedback that we have received um, by having a contractor onboard uh, throughout our design process. We've also engaged uh, Advanced Building Performance, who will be our, our commissioning agent. Uh, Atlantic Corporate Interiors, who's helped us with the furniture uh, consulting and ultimately be our furniture supplier. And then Solar Q, our solar engineer, who uh, designed a small solar system we're proposing on site. So to go over some details about why this project is important to us and why we need this uh, new facility, um, as it was mentioned, we are looking to incorporate a fully redundant contact center, operations center, and data center uh, into our facility here at Leonardtown, uh, really help improve our operations overall as, as a cooperative. We're looking to develop a sustainable building. With a sustainable building, we hope uh, to develop something that's energy efficient, something that reduces our, our garden footprint, and something that's enjoyable for um, our employees and our customers, really key in on uh, workplace environment. Uh, from some operational efficiencies, currently all our trucks are stored over awnings or covered canopy, so we look to bring all those inside, those will really help in the, in the storm situations. Uh, will also help with our materials management. And then um, finally, the, the, the new building will position us uh, to adapt to ever-changing requirements that we are faced with uh, NERC and FERC, the federal agencies that uh, govern our business. Uh, got a brief thing there on the, on the uh, screen there that shows the design and the number of employees that we are currently accommodating and what we are, are proposing to accommodate in our twenty-year uh, life se- cycle. So, the building now is designed for seventy-six employees, it's right about, we fluctuate a little bit, but that's about where we're at. And then we've got a twenty-year uh, projected growth uh, to eighty-nine employees. So not a, not a huge growth anticipated, but um, it is factored into the design. Uh, just some background on the type of uh, employment that, or employees that work out of that facility. We have our construction crews, uh, obviously our alignment, our servicemen. We have uh, materials handlers down there, uh, and administrative support and engineering support, so. That's a quick introduction on why your project's important to us, and I'd like to turn it over to Stacy to go over the site plan.
Hey, good afternoon. As Ryan said, I'm Stacy Legana, Lawrence Abel and Gannell, we're the civil on the project. So, some of this will be some review from our last meeting, um, but kind of I'll go through it again just to refresh you and, and go from there. So, um, this is our um, site plan. He says we're gonna identify some of the existing um, site constraints. Um, of course, this is an area of the property. Um, just to orient you, we have Leonard's Grant Parkway and Hollywood Road. Um, the outline of, of our property, Smecko's property that they own. Um, currently, we have the existing building that we're gonna be removing. Um, we also have the antenna, sorry, I'm just blowing building three there, there's an antenna that is going to remain. Uh, we have a storage shelter that's gonna be relocated on our new plan. Um, we also have the fueling area that's gonna be relocated on our new plan. Um, we also have a truck wash bay that's going to be relocated. Um, we have our entrance off of Hollywood Road that's going to remain in its current location. And of course, we have our environmental buffers, um, that we're gonna leave intact. We have um, onsite forest conservation and actually an expanded buffer, um, that we are gonna, gonna remain, that's gonna remain as-is. Um, there's also an area of archaeological value that will also remain undisturbed on-site. So that's kind of the summary of the existing conditions that we currently have. Um, so we have our approved concept site plan. This is the same plan that we saw back in May, um, of twenty eighteen. So I'm gonna run back through this and then we'll review our uh, proposed final site plan and I'll kind of outline the changes for you. Okay, so just to orient you again, we have Hollywood Road and Leonard's Grant Parkway. Um, we have uh, this, the entrance off of Hollywood Road. We have an entrance now proposed off of Leonard's Grant Parkway, same as before. Um, we have our building, um, still situated in the center of the site there. Um, we have our visitor parking for those people who are coming to pay their bills or, or visiting um, Smecko. Um, they're all gonna entrance off of Hollywood Road, entrance and exit off of Hollywood Road. Um, we have our, um, and that's, shows there how our, um, ingress and egress there on the Hollywood Road. We also have um, our employee parking, shown there in purple. And they are going to ingress and egress off of Leonard's Grant Parkway. So it's kind of separated the visitors from the uh, the people who work at Smecko. Um, we have our um, our yard, our storage yard, shown here in yellow. Um, we have the existing antenna that's going to remain. Um, we have our proposed fueling station, as shown on the other plan, that we're relocating here. And we also have the proposed wash bay, which has been relocated to the um, area that's shown on the plan here. So we also have landscape buffers, um, important today to uh, buffer your site from, from roads and adjoining properties. Uh, we have a proposed security fence that encompasses the entire campus, um, for, for Smecko's security and, and safety. Uh, we have, still have the same three access points as we proposed before, um, through the security gate. We have one off of Hollywood Road, one off of Leonard's Grant Parkway that both access the actual yard. And then we have the one secure access point that, um, for the employee parking lot. Um, we also um, have the area that's designated as the town gateway for a proposed, you know, town, Leonard Town entrance side. Um, and we also have proposed sidewalks, so across the front edge, um, of the site. So, um, just to review, for review, some of this will be, be a repeat from the previous slide, but I will review the changes that we've made um, to this plan. So same thing, entrance off of Hollywood Road and entrance off of Leonard's Grant Parkway, those locations did not change. Um, same thing as the previous plan we saw. Um, the building, same general configuration, got a little bit smaller, um, little bit more compressed than the other um, drawing, but generally the same shape. Um, we also have the entrance off of Hollywood Road, again, same location, but we eliminated the circle. You'll see in the previous plan, there was a circle. We took that out, we thought this uh, linear configuration worked well. Um, it also allowed us to decrease our curvaceous area. Anytime you can do that and have grass instead of pavement, it's a positive thing. So that's, that's what we did here. Um, we still have the same visitor parking, little bit compressed and moved it up towards the building a little bit more, but pretty much the same thing and it functions the same way. Same thing with the employee parking, same location. We may move around some islands and things, but general configuration and functionality is the same. Uh, we also have the proposed equipment and storage yard. Uh, we decreased this area by about an acre and a half. So, again, uh, we felt this function perfectly fine for Smecko's needs and uh, you know, we worked together and got that uh, yard decreased slightly, um, by about an acre and a half. So it's about an acre and a half of gravel pavement that you won't have there. Um, we, still the existing antenna to remain in the same location. Um, the proposed fueling, just tucked that in a little bit closer to the building, but generally the same thing. Also with the wash bay tucked in a little closer to the building again, hold everything in a little bit tighter, but generally um, the, the same uh, function. Uh, we also have the proposed landscape buffers, just as shown on the previous plan. Um, we have the proposed security fence, pretty much the same location as before, just tucked it in a little bit tighter around that yard that we squeezed in. Um, we also have the same three access points, secure ac- access points as we did on previous plan. Um, now we are showing our water line now accessing off of Leonard's Grant Parkway. Um, Smecko was very proactive and coordinated with the library. Um, as you know, the library was wanting, running the water line at Leonard's Grant Parkway, so we called them, coordinated with them, said, hey, why don't we go ahead and put this water line across Leonard's Grant Parkway now? You know, let's do all this, um, disturbance along Leonard's Grant Parkway now, makes sense. So we went in and got that in. So now we have a water tap, I'd say about five feet into our property. So when we come to do construction, we're just gonna tie into that water tap and take it into our building. There's gonna be no disturbance to Leonard's Grant Parkway now. So, um, that was a, a very uh, proactive thing to do to, to help the community and have less impact when we do those constructions. Um, we also have a gravity silver line that's gonna go to a pump and then ultimate, ultimately tie into a force main, so a force main along Leonard's Grant Parkway. Um, and of course, um, a new aspect to this plan is we've incorporated some solar panels. Um, and I'll get a little bit more into detail about that on a later slide. Okay, so just to point out some things about the final uh, site plan that we thought were um, important to point out. We have a bike rack and a pedestrian connectivity throughout the plan. Um, Smecko does have a wellness program, and this is in line with that. They encourage their employees to walk and, and do those kinds of things, so um, that's, that's right in line with their program. Um, we also have environmentally sensitive, um, or envi- environmentally friendly landscaping, I'm sorry. And we're only using native species, that's actually a requirement of LEED. Um, and it's actually encouraged now across the board in most jurisdictions that you want to use native species. Okay, so, um, we have preferred parking now for low emitting and fuel-efficient vehicles. We had plans before, but I'm gonna point that out a little bit more in a later slide. Um, we have a permanent forest conservation easement and buffer conservation area. Um, we are a smooth free campus, that's another LEED requirement, um, and also a requirement for Smecko's. Um, uh, we have environmentally friendly stormwater design. Um, we have a lot of bio-retention facilities. Um, I don't know how familiar you are with bio-retention, but it's basically, um, where stormwater is collected and filtered through plants and grass and sand. It's a natural way of cleaning that water before it gets down to your uh, to your uh, aquifer. So, we have quite a few ways. And the picture here on this slide is actually representative of what they, they will look like. So, um, back to the solar. Um, we are going to have ninety-six panels, which are on six arrays. So we have six arrays, they're shown on the plan. It's gonna be, um, when you come in off of Hollywood Road, it's gonna be to the left. Um, this area currently is paved, but that pavement will be removed. These panels will be in the grass area. Um, the anticipated annual energy capture is gonna be forty-four thousand kilowatt hours. Um, this represents about seven percent of the building's proposed energy consumption. So, and what this does is it gets us uh, four LEED points, so. Okay, we also have um, another element of our green infrastructure, and that's the um, electric vehicle charging stations. Um, we have uh, uh, one charger for level three stations. Um, the level three stations are faster chargers. It takes about thirty to forty-five minutes to charge a car using one of these stations. So we've put those in our visitor parking. We figure visitors will be there for a shorter period of time. Um, we also have two chargers and four spaces for level two charging. Um, and we've put those in the employee parking lot. We figure hopefully employees are gonna be here for more than thirty to forty-five minutes, so they could, uh, they can use those spaces. And we also have some spaces designated as a future level two um, charging stations. So we have a more capacity to put, put more charging stations there. So, and this is just basically a summary of um, the approvals that we've obtained to date. Um, we've gotten all of our required approvals. This is kind of our last step, um, and we're happy to be here and, and that's pretty much where we're at. So we've come a long way since last time you were before you. And with that, I will turn it over to Stacy.
Thanks Stacy.
So, uh, to kind of reintroduce myself again, I'm Steve Abel and with Lawrence Abel and Associates, architects and planners. Uh, basically, uh, your first slide here is gonna be a little refresher on what we presented last time. So, what we have, uh, the building is basically divided off into about five different uh, categories. Uh, what you're seeing here is our customer service category in purple. Uh, then we get back into our construction offices, general offices, uh, truck bays, and our, our warehouse, uh, our next uh, little area here, that's our, our loading areas. Uh, what, what uh, our goal was is to try and uh, pull the building in. You can see here, you know, the building has some separation, if this little laser works or not, but, not on the screen. So you can see that we've got a few uh, appendages here. Right, right here at this connector, and then this is really kind of pulled out. What we, what we're looking to do is to condense the building and save some square footage. Oh, I'm sorry, here we go. I've got our employee entrance and our customer service entrance, which also ties back to what Stacy was talking about with the, the three different access points of the site. So what we ended up doing here is we uh, we ended up pulling in the general offices uh, into the uh, the building. Got rid of the uh, that, that small connecting appendage and then also pulled in the regional services or the customer services in purple. Uh, there were a few other things that we did as far as looking to minimize some of the access points through, out the building and squeeze some quarters back together. We also came in and hit uh, laterally, uh, and we pulled it in by maybe just a few feet here or there, and it really helped us to pull the site back down. Uh, you know, when we pulled the building in, we gained, gained some extra site. And um, what it also gave us the ability to do here is we uh, ended up pulling together, um, this was originally a separate building, they had a separate equipment shelter, and we pulled the wash bay into that. So we were able to kind of condense a lot of um, what we were doing on the site to save that extra, you know, acre and a quarter that uh, Stacy was, had. that extra, you know, acre and a quarter that Stacy was having actions. So, there we go. And then again, here's our employee entrance and our customer service entrance. You can see that we also pulled back some of the loading area that we had before, so we reduced that as well. So basically, you know, our, our strategy was, you know, to reduce the site, site impact, our, our strategy combines the accessory structures we were just talking about with the main structure. We reduced the size of material laid down yard by an acre and a quarter. And then we eliminated a traffic circle. So we actually had a, a circle in the front of the site at one point that, that we eliminated. As far as the building area reduction strategies, we, again, minimized the appendages. We examined interior circulation to reduce the interior corridors. And we also reduced the number of sizes of assembly areas. So we have, you know, quite a bit of multi-purpose rooms throughout the project. And so we took down some of those and then kind of combined a few things together in order to get, reduce square footage that we came up with. So here, some of the numbers may look a little bit different, but, you know, what, what has been happening is we, you know, once you combine all of the exterior buildings in with this one, with the new one, the, the numbers really kind of came out butt head. So, you know, you can see that there's a pretty significant reduction that we really kind of saved by doing what we did, the thousand square feet that Jen was talking about. Really, you know, once we add back in those other items, that's what kind of brought it up. When you look at the entire site being pulled down, that, that's with the, with the accessory structures, you get quite a, quite a bit more savings overall in the project. So here was our original approved concept. You can see here that we had kind of a rotunda feature, that circular feature that pops out at the top of the center component here. That's really easy to see. But right here, we had a rotunda feature. Some of the differences were, as we were looking at originally having precast concrete panels here for our, this general office area. And then for regional services, we were looking at having some answered rooms that had some pitches to them. And then what we ended up working out was, the pitch groups, they were, they, you know, there's some costs associated with those, so we looked for other ways to kind of reexamine what we were doing and how to be, you know, still kind of get, you know, some of the, you know, you know, town appeal and fit in with the town architecture. So what we looked at doing was, you know, keeping a, our parapet and consistent, just like we had before. And then we looked at how we could get some of the, the entablature to carry through the entire building. And I talk about the entablature, it's really not just a parapet wall, but it's this whole component here. So a lot of what's happening here is based off of a Tuscan column or essentially the scale, the proportion of the openings, you know, to the, you know, to the, the parapet wall all have relationships. They kind of get a good act of some sort, you know, it's not just arbitrary decisions to, to the heights and the proportions that we put together here. But, so anyway, this, this view would be from the employee entrance. So if you're at the back of the parking lot, it's closest to the street, then that's what you would be seeing. Here's kind of a bird's eye view from Hollywood Road. So, again, that kind of puts you into context. This is our customer service area. You get back into our construction offices. Here we have the materials warehouse, and then here the, the truck base. As you notice that we've got some, the, the clear story remained, the rotunda feature was up in here. So the clear story was very important to our design because we're trying to get as much light into the spaces that we can. So, you know, this, the, the floor plan is, is pretty deep, so, you know, a lot of what we were trying to do is find ways to bring square footage into the building, which is not just for the comfort of employees, but it's also a, a LEED credit that, that we're trying to achieve. The other nice component about the, or nice, nice attribute to the clear story is we don't have as many, you know, horizontal skylights, so we've got a better envelope with this configuration. So here's what you would see walking up to pay your bill or to, you know, schedule new service or to, you know, have interaction with the customer service team. You know, this would be driving around the employee entrance, so this would be the main employee entrance here. And then back behind here is, is basically where we've got our big assembly room. So we've got, you know, a nice multi-purpose assembly room. In front of that is a little pre-conference area that kind of opens up into the space. From the side here, coming, coming around, we've got our loading area. So we've got a loading ground coming down in. And then here are our truck bays. At this point, this is where we added the wash bay. And here we added the, the equipment shelter that was previously centered from this building. So this would be kind of, you know, the Leonard's Grant side flipping up above the tree line from the slot bird's eye view. So colors, a lot of the colors are the same. The building is actually comprised of two types of buildings. You've got the, the back where the truck bays are, it's a pre-engineered metal building. And the front is more of a conventional system, which is the steel superstructure things, you know, high beams, things like that, steel columns. What, what we've done here is we've, you know, tried to marry a few different types of materials here. The conventional building where you have the most public interaction and employee interaction, we've got some more refined materials. So the materials that were selected is, you know, we have a, a water table essentially here. We're using aeroscrap. It's like a cast stone product. It's a, you know, kind of, it's not limestone, but it's designed to kind of, to, to give that sort of, same sort of feel, look and appeal as limestone. You know, to kind of relate that back to what's happening in the building, pre-engineered building, we selected a rustic faced CNC M.U. So it's actually, I'm sure, you know, familiar with split face block, very similar to split face block, although it just has much more of a, you know, kind of a refined, you know, since you don't get the contour that you get with the split face. So, you know, so anyway, they kind of line up together and match up in texture. From there, we were, we're using the same mortar, the, the CNU and the cast stone. And then we, basically, the mortar that we selected, you know, has, it's kind of a sandy color. We're looking to use some of the same materials that typically you would use, you know, like a regional material. You know, if you look at a lot of the historic, you know, buildings in Southern Maryland, you'll notice that there's, the mortar is typically, you know, a cream sort of sandy bump.
Okay, that's what I hear. Sorry. Carry on.
So anyway, what we also did to kind of reduce the, the scale is we, we worked with an economy sized brick. So we've got a brick that's a little bit larger than the standard vinyl brick, so, you know, if you're looking at a typical course, I mean, three bricks are, you know, typical age of the building. From there, we, we come in, we go three brick, some other elevations. That's the red brick. Once we get up above that, that water table, the red brick has a colored mortar that matches the brick. The brick is, is a, is a wire cut brick, it's the uniform, you know, the color is uniform, the, the cut is uniform. And same with the buff. So once we get back up into the buff, we're also flipping back the same mortar that we had before. And then the cornice or the, in the top of the entablature, that is, that's a drive-in system. And so we're gonna select a, a finish that was, you know, similar to the, the cast stone. From there, the roof has a TPO membrane roof, it's white. If, you know, part of that is also associated with LEED, so we're looking for, you know, to have, you know, the cool, cool roof, the reflective roof that aids in, you know, not only just keeping the general area cool, but it also makes a big difference with, with the air conditioning system. The, you know, at the clear story, we have metal roof panels, which will also be white, which is up here in the top left of our slide. Coming down, as far as our storefront, we've got a white aluminum frame storefront curtain wall system. The, the glazing is actually green. It looks a little blue there on that. I think the, the colors are kind of plain off the slide, but it's just a very, very light, light green tint to the glass. So anyway, you know, a big push from the beginning of this project, you know, first thing that we probably talked about is that, you know, Smecko wanted this to be a LEED, the LEED certification's very important to them. You know, so we, you know, kicked some things around in the beginning, and we thought that fifty percent, fifty points would be fall into the, the silver category with the goals that they had. LEED is the, it's the most widely used, you know, green building rating system in the world. And, you know, basically, it's, you know, it saves energy, it saves water, it saves, you know, in all types of resources. You know, we're looking to, you know, we've got a, a pretty efficient building here. You know, some of the things that we, you know, goals that we're trying to accomplish, we're looking to accomplish a forty percent reduction in water use, a twenty-four percent reduction in energy use. We're using recycled materials throughout, so, you know, basically twenty percent recycled materials minimum. We don't, you know, we may end up with more, but that's, you know, a minimum goal. Regional materials, so, you know, all the materials you just saw, we just talked about, they're all coming from a five hundred dollar range. So they're, you know, they're all local, you know, it's local, we can get them to be, you know, which is, you know, not just, you know, good for the local economy, but it's, it's, it's good for the, the environment as well, so there's less, you know, resources expended to get the materials on site. We're trying to recycle seventy-five percent of the construction waste. So we have a, a, the, the waste, a waste plan for the project during construction. We have worked with our contractor, Shible, throughout to develop that plan. And so we'll have different dumpsters that, that will take different items, and then those items are gonna be taken on site and, and, you know, split up and, and taken to the appropriate places for recycling or for its final destination to, to the dump. So, basically, you know, throughout we'll be using low VOC materials. We'll be monitoring real-time energy and water use, so you'll be able to come in and, and look at, you know, TV monitor to see if the building's actually doing good, you know, around the time. We talked a little bit about capturing daylight, you know, we're talking about the clear story earlier. You know, there's, we're looking for ways to, not only through the clear story, but we're also using some tubular day lighting systems. So we've got throughout where some of there's, you know, where there aren't any windows necessarily to the outside. We've got some, you know, they're, they're almost like skylights, but they, they basically capture the sunlight and then direct it down in a reflective tube to different areas in the building. That will also be, you know, hooked into our lighting system, which will, you know, basically kind of communicate back and forth when the lighting system sees that the, the daylight has disappeared, and then we can control the, you know, it'll be controlled by, you know, that, the lack of light, the, the system will come on and take care of that. So, other things that we're looking to do, you know, ongoing green policies. So after the building is complete, you know, maintaining healthy workplace requirements, so, you know, the indoor, outdoor, you know, cleaning policies and landscape policy is what we're actually determined and so forth. That, you know, those, those policies will be put into place. So, back to the site here, we've got really, you know, a couple of phases. Phase two is really phases two and three that Jen was, was talking about earlier. The, the blue area, that's our initial phase. We expect that to last plus or minus eighteen months. The, the, the green area, which is phases two and three, that will take about six months to do. So that's the one we'll be tearing down the building and then finishing on the rest of the site work, or making site work. You know, from, from there, can't see. Put some on here. Sorry about this, guys.
It's twenty eight.
Okay, yeah, thanks. So you can see that the, the gray areas are areas that we've, you know, where we are now have completed or where we are to date. So essentially, right now, we're close to, you know, permit issuance, the, the project's making bids, and the, the GMP is a gross, gross national price, and so we're looking to establish that through the summer. And then, you know, from there, we get working on the earthwork and utilities with the, our rating permit. And then sometime in August, we'd be starting construction of phase one. So that eighteen month, plus or minus, that, that's when that would kick off. From there, we'd be looking at getting through phase two approximately January twenty twenty-one. And then we've got some commissioning time at the end. So the building wouldn't, you know, be occupied, but the commissioning time would be, you know, a part of the LEED requirements. We would be doing extra studies for the, you know, like the VOCs and, you know, like the, the, and things. But, so, we'd be complete hopefully with our, our LEED certificate in December twenty twenty-two. So, that's kind of where we are as far as schedule is concerned. So, and then our final, just questions? So, any questions?
I'm sorry. Um, where, so you're gonna have the bike racks and the employee, and the customer service, right? Okay, very good.
Yep, and so, you know, there'll be a lot of rooms that employees can come in, take a shower, you know.
Thought I remembered that, okay. And then, is this the, this is the first LEED planned sort of like building for all of Leonard Town, right? We don't have any other buildings under construction going for LEED certification. That's a big deal. Right? So, and then this is...
Well, the elementary school was.
But it is built of green, but it doesn't have any LEED certifications yet.
I thought they did. Maybe not.
And I don't think Duke has any LEED certifications. Evergreen does though, right? And just Kohl's? So this would be the third in all of St. Mary's, I think?
I'm not certain about all of St. Mary's. I, I haven't kept up with county government and what they actually have going on.
Okay, yeah.
But I do know you're right, Kohl's and...
The only O two, I think, yeah.
LEED certifications. Duke does not, they're just considered green.
Right. Cause you have to like, you know, show... Right. Cause you have to like, you know, show your electric bevels and all that kind of, like, you have to send all that stuff in too. Oh, I just thought that was interesting, especially for Leonardtown.
Definitely, let's, let's, it's an honor.
And isn't this the only, this is the only place I can think of that has the chargers for vehicles too, right? In all of Saint Mary's, not that you want to provide that to people. I'm here to pay my bill.
I don't know about all of Saint Mary's, but they'll be the first in Leonardtown.
Yeah, so, right, it's a...
I mean, other than private homes.
There's some of these.
Oh, yeah.
I do remember there was some of these.
Oh my gosh, and now the dead horse, which I think we've talked about forever. The, the little neighbor, the neighbors, not little neighbors, but the neighbors with all of the drainage, that got fixed, we're good.
Yep.
You've accounted all of that.
Yes, yeah.
And they're okay with solar panels?
As far as I know.
I mean, we haven't had any, um, public input. They did meet with the H O A for Leonard's grand.
Okay, but not the other folks on the other side that would be looking out and...
One of the things that's nice...
That's what I was gonna ask too, about like, the, those big green trees.
And there's two existing trees that are not, that are going to stay.
Okay.
So they're established and they're larger, so it should stop to screen the solar.
Okay, perfect. Uh, the building looks beautiful, absolutely amazing. I think it's a huge improvement, so.
We have wrapped a drainage swale along the side of the property with a, with an inlet to cap, capture the drainage every day on that side of the property.
All right, all right, thank you. And I like, I do like that the employee entrance, that gated part is further in, so that it doesn't block up, you know, folks kind of coming in, especially when we have that connector road, the library, and then that other subdivision across the street, it's gonna get...
We, yeah, we, we did actually have, um, our traffic engineer take a look at the how, how we could stack everything on the site. So based on, um, you know, the, the one thing that, uh, that Smecko has done is they, you know, have looked, examined their own operations. And so we were able to, you know, in conjunction with what the information and data that they were able to give, along with getting our, the traffic engineer to take a look at some of their stuff, we were, we were able to figure out how many people we could stack. And there was, uh, I think the most that they had were four cars stacked at one time, and now we've got set up like seven or eight cars. So we've almost doubled the stacking coming in to go through that gate.
Okay, very good, yeah.
Um, you know, the other, the other part of it is just kind of reinforce what was going on with the traffic study that, you know, that we prepared, was, uh, you know, Smecko's, um, you know, their most active time is not the same as what is happening with, um, you know, you know, the, the most act, you know, the, the actual most active times on all the streets. So they're actually, uh, you know, have, majority of their traffic is occurring about an hour and a half before everybody else is really coming through there.
The, the start of school?
Yeah.
So, LaShaw, that's a question. We don't have any plans for our middle school still going there, do we, or is that still...
The school board has said that there really isn't a need for a middle school, so it would be really far out if they did, and would do it. I don't think they've decided what they would use on that other side.
And then there would be a designated, like, right turn lane there into the employee entrance? So, you know, like a little, like, cutout, or is it like an immediate, like, turn right?
It's, it's just a, an immediate turn right, I don't think that there's a bypass or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
On the, on the water now, are you collecting any water, like, rainwater that you reused?
Uh, we are not, uh, we, we're not using cisterns to collect rainwater, so, right now, all of the rainwater is being, um, collected by the stormwater management system and treated that way, and then released, uh, to its various points on site.
Is the, yeah, is the water in the wash bay, is that recycled?
Uh, no, the, the water in the wash bay would be, uh, going into the sanitary.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I'd like to say one other thing before we close. Uh, I'd just like to let the commission know how appreciative and thankful we've been uh, to have LaShaw and Jada's support throughout the project. Uh, we're calling them non-stop, probably asking, uh, lots and lots of questions, um, that they're probably not used to. So, uh, they have been more than supportive to us throughout the process, and, uh, we're very appreciative for that. It's been great to have a resource right in, right in a folk call day, so.
Well, they're pretty amazing.
No more questions, or?
I think there was a question in the back there.
No question, yeah. Yes, sir.
I assume the traffic study acknowledged the future traffic, connecting cars, bus subdivision with...
Yes, it does. It's looking at all the, it, it, it actually examined about four different in, in intersection points. Uh, so, uh, you know, it was the, actually the same traffic engineer that, um, that did that study. So, uh, so pretty much all the development that has occurred, uh, within that area was provided by the same, by the same engineer. So we've got a lot of consistency and continuity with what's happening, uh, you know, with, with our traffic study.
Yeah. Admittedly, I don't know a lot about this, but just curious, the decision to do solar panels on the ground versus like on the roof, or maybe in addition on the roofs of the buildings, is there, is that, is that down, or why?
Well, uh, you know, basically, um, you know, part of what we were trying to do with this facility was to, um, uh, you know, we're, we're looking to keep it, uh, the hurricane safe, so we felt that, that, you know, having the, um, the solar panels lower would be, uh, you know, safer for the building and have less effect on the structure of the building, so.
Could you go back to the slide that has the site plan, show where the solar, the Georgia annual tell you, I, I was not a big fan of that. But it's not, the amount, it's, it's a very small amount, um, if you're envisioning Hughesville.
I was gonna say like the Hughesville property, but that's like out in the field.
And so, I, I don't think you should, I mean, you know, but...
They, it's not on there, LaShaw, like they're, well, it's on that one that has like a, but it looks really tiny.
It is, it is really tiny.
It, it's really not, um, a large amount at all.
Yeah, the scale is pretty small, really, when you look at it, so.
It's actually back off the road somewhat.
Yeah, it's back off the road, and with the buffer. So that, it would be six of those little, those little guys.
Yes. So it's, it's not like a big, big C E O.
And what I would point out is, is that, you know, it's, uh, you know, it's collecting from here, and then, you know, we have, we've kept two mature trees at this location, so we'll have some...
There's a bumpy part of the...
Yeah, there's a bumpy buffer along here, and then we've got mature trees here, and then we also have panics coming along the front driveway access. So, but, you know, I mean, I, I guess, you know, what I, what I think about it from a design standpoint, the context in which it is, I mean, I, you know, you have a, an electric, you know, cooperative that is, uh, trying to promote, you know, the use of alternative energies, lead building. I mean, it only makes sense for it to be there. I mean, when you come in, you've got, uh, the ability to see what it's collecting. So, I mean, you know, you really have an opportunity for, uh, you know, students could go there and kind of check it out, see what it's like, and, you know, say like, hey, you know, this is like powering, you know, your house right now, or, you know, something of the equivalent of that. So, there's a, you know, really kind of a, uh, you know, I guess, you know, I do feel like it makes some sense to have that there. Kind of like a touchy feel, this is what, you know, our organization is about, and, and, uh, the things that we're trying to promote as far as the environment's concerned, so.
Well, we have a lot of houses in Leonardtown that use the solar panels, and so it would make sense that our electric company would also use them.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, my question is, cause I was actually surprised there are more, I guess, more included in the...
I could just comment. We, we wanted to do a tangible demonstration of our commitment to, uh, green energy without violating some of the principles that, uh, you guys hold dear in terms of the aesthetics. Um, the, uh, to really downsize what we originally intended to do, you know, still be visible, and we think it's, it'd be a, it's, it's a nice accent to the building. Uh, we're, we're working on our third major solar farm like the C M U's of right now. Uh, so this is just an opportunity here locally to, to show what we're doing and our commitment to that. That's really what it's all about, I think. It's not gonna parry the, the whole building, unfortunately. But we're trying to do, get them between two different, uh, uh, competing forces, too, you know, a lot of people don't wanna see them. A lot of people like to, like the sustainability of, of solar panel, so we think at least this is a good compromise, but it's not...
True.
Okay, any other comments? No, I do like the idea of you kind of using it as an education, like, you know, for the community, for them to learn.
Yeah.
Write that down for your comps people.
Yeah, I mean, it's amazing, uh, you know, you think about, you know, forty-four thousand kilowatt hours being, I mean, really, it's, it's not a very large area, and you're pulling in a lot of energy, it's, it's pretty amazing.
What does that equate to in savings? Honey, do you guys catch those metrics and things like that, or?
You have to factor in the investment costs, and I don't really don't have that.
It's far down the road, right?
I mean, usually the...
Just to give you a house, a typical house in Southern Maryland is about twelve hundred kilowatt hours a month. So you can kind of gauge the capacity of your, you know, for your own home.
Very good, thank you.
You know, forty-four, forty-some times.
I, I heard a comment on this at the town hall meeting, the proposed valley league fire department house, fire department building. And I'd never thought about it before I heard this comment, was, and this may have already probably been addressed, but all these solar panels are gonna be put on property as opposed to buildings. This means that property won't be used or anything else for, I don't know, the modern years. So thereby, this person said, why can't more of these panels be put on top of roofs? And I think the cops go, no.
Yeah.
But I thought it was a valid concern, and I'm sure that concern...
It's, um, it is a topic of conversation these days, because, you know, farms are going into, I mean, agricultural properties are going into, you know, solar farms now. But, uh, you're really, um, the main issue is that the direction of the roofs have to be, uh, correct. You know, you have cheating coefficients, trees that are jaking the doors, um, and then the cost is, is can be multiples of the ground systems because of the work on the roofs competing with, like, in our case, we're competing with area handling units and things that are already placed on the roof to be out of sight. So the, the amount of square footage that you have is, is pretty small, really. I don't, it sounds like a great solution, but it's just not the N S E.
What was the potential acres in the future to, to accommodate, I mean, I know some...
Yeah, I have that number. Um, see, the, the state of Maryland is, is, I know we're going off script here, might be...
It's okay.
But, uh, you know, I did, I'll talk to you, because, because we're kind of a...
That's our view of it.
Do you have a motion? Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, sure. All right, I, uh, move to approve the final site plan for a seventy-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two U. square foot building, and outbuildings pending approval from the state fire marshal for case number thirty dash sixteen.
I'll second that. I'm staring at you.
But you have to say how well.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Yes, very good. Nice to have this in Leonardtown, do you mind? It'll be really exciting.
So, we have lots of monthly in-house permits to review. If anybody had any questions about any of them.
Could it fielded five complaints in February?
Um, so every now and then we get, um, customer concerns that come in, um, whether it's...
Like me?
Whether it's, you know, somebody...
I'll give you your text.
Somebody, somebody complaining about, I don't know, their stormwater management, somebody, their next door neighbor hasn't cut their grass. Um, stuff like that, you know, somebody's trash is overflowing, they threw a couch in the backyard. Uh, those are all things that I go out and I look at, and we try to get those picked up and fixed as quickly as possible to try to keep Leonardtown pretty.
Okay, thank you. Not to say I don't have a look at these, but this is the first time I've ever...
I have, there's still a few...
Well, those were recently added.
Okay, okay. It's like, I've never, ever seen.
No, they were, okay. No, they're new.
All right.
It's nice to have them, though.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Roll, okay?
Roll in favor, aye. So I wanna put a poll...